This conference will now be recorded.
Bob, your camera is off. You want to share your camera?
Yep, I'm gonna share that right now. All right. Good evening, everyone. Would someone like to make a motion to call a meeting to order?
I'll make a motion to call the meeting to order. Trustee Galusha.
Do we have a second?
Lanthea, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
First item is, does anyone have any conflicts of interest they would like to disclose or the appearance of a conflict of interest?
I have nothing to disclose. Trustee Galusha.
Lanthea, I do not.
Stetser, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
Orby, I do not. Next item, we will ask everybody to turn off your phones or any device that you would having digital communication with someone who's not here so in compliance with the open meetings law. I have not brought my phone tonight. I do not have any other devices for electronic communication that will be active during this meeting. Lilly, do you?
Bob, I have a question before you about the disclosure. So we have the Frog Houses on the agenda tonight and the last agenda I saw. Can you disclose what your relationship is to them? Because it looks like you're on the board there.
I'm not on the board of the Frog House. I'm a friend of Margot Fast, but I'm not on the board of the Frog House.
Okay, you might want to look at the website. It lists you as a special.
Yeah, they asked me to be a member, but I said no because because of this very reason. So that's that's my disclosure.
Okay, so according to the website, it looks like you do have an official.
I'll talk to Margot Fast, make sure that's corrected. Thank you.
Okay, this is Trustee Lanthea. I have to use my phone unfortunately because I couldn't get a connection to view my agenda.
Well, it's legal as long as you're only you're not using it for outside communication.
No, I'm not communicating. I just needed to be able to view the agenda.
Okay. Frank?
My phone is off.
Thank you. Renee?
I do have my phone because my daughter is driving my son to swim practice, but it's over here. It's on silent. It'll buzz.
If you get a notification, that's fine. You just can't have any ongoing communication electronically. If you do, it has to be disclosed and shared with the public.
Gotcha.
Dan?
I have to be in touch with my kids, so my my cellphone is on.
Okay, as long as you're not communicating with them during the meeting, if you are, you'll have to just disclose that.
I may have to.
Then just disclose it when it happens, Dan.
So this is the same as when we were in the office. If we need to step away or answer our phones, we just need to let you know.
Just announce it, announce it, leave the meeting, take care of your communication, out of the meeting, and then come back in. That's that's fine. You know, we all realize we have families in emergency situations, those we can deal with in that way. Okay, the first public hearing we have tonight is a proposed local law amending section 195-32 and section 195-33, which are time requirement parking. Dorothy, I didn't see a copy of the proposed local law. Is that in here? Did I miss that? All right, just flipped over it.
Yes, it's in your packet, Bob. It's right after the public hearing notice.
Great, thank you.
I am ashamed. This is Turner. I'm ashamed to say there is a typo in the local law. I believe it should be 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM, Monday through Friday, in the addition to 195-32. And that that is a change that can be made tonight because it would make the statute less restrictive.
Okay, for everybody that's attending the meeting tonight, the two amended time requirements on parking are as follows. On Monroe Avenue, currently, 15-minute parking is permitted from and it is prohibited from 4:00 PM to 6:30. I don't think that's quite right. I think currently the parking is prohibited from 4:00 PM to 6 o'clock, I think is actually. I think that's a typo, too. The proposal is to eliminate the 30-minute restriction so that parking gets more use. Currently, it hasn't been used. I've talked to the merchants in the area. They would like to make use of that. And this will, in that discussion, would make it a more usable amenity that would serve the businesses located around the corner. Any discussion from the board?
No. Lilly, your camera is not on. Just so you know.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Stetser, second.
Trustee Galusha.
Oops. It's a continuation of your birthday, Frank. I'm sorry.
Okay, would anyone, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this proposed local law?
Bob, would you like me to call a roll call on that?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Dorothea. Thank you.
Sure. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye. But Dorothea, hold on one minute. I have a new version of GoToMeeting. I can't see that it is being recorded. Is the meeting being?
It is being recorded.
Okay.
Trustee Lanthea? I believe we lost Lilly.
Okay, let's just, let's move ahead anyway. She'll be back.
Trustee Stetser? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, all right. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on the proposed time restriction changes for Monroe Avenue? Okay, seeing there are no comments, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Was that a hand raised, Renee?
I was pointing to Frank.
Okay, because on my screen, he's on the other side. You were pointing at Jeff.
Okay, Trustee Galusha, second.
Thank you, Frank. Dorothea, would you call a vote again, please?
Sure. Trustee Galusha?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion to pass local law number one, I guess.
This is Jeff. That is secret.
Secret. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
So we've prepared, I prepared a draft, Part Two and Three. I circulated that to the board. If it's acceptable, there are no changes, the motion could be to adopt those two parts and a neg deck.
My only question in reviewing that, Jeff, was, I don't know where we, this might be a question for the other trustees. We talked about doing away with the parking requirements altogether. We never really finished that conversation, did we? So we're doing this sort of as a little interim step?
This is something different. This is the parking at the at the corner of Main Street there.
This is on Monroe Avenue in what is the parking lane or the turning lane, and right now there's a 30-minute restriction. The merchants in that area have requested we eliminate that.
Right, I'm clear on that. I was talking about Jeff's, the email Jeff sent earlier today that had everything in it. So, okay.
Dan, Dan, for clarification, we're doing a seeker for each of these, so. I mean, if that's your question.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
So does this, this requires two resolutions, Jeff?
Jeff, you're muted.
You're muted, Jeff.
It requires the seeker resolution, which could be adoption of Parts Two and Three as proposed, and a negative declaration for the project. And then the second resolution is adopting the local law with the changes of 6:00 PM and 6:00 o'clock rather than 6:30 and PM rather than AM.
Thank you. Okay, I will make a motion to adopt Parts Two and Three that Jeff has prepared and a neg deck declaration. I'm doing that because there are no physical changes that are caused by this adoption of this local law. It's only a time restriction, and it will make the on-street parking more useful for the business community that it intended to support. Lilly, can you hear me? I'm just proposing.
I can now. I'm sorry I had to get onto a different computer. I lost connection.
No, you're good now. I'm proposing a resolution to adopt a negative declaration for the local law regulating the parking requirements on Monroe Avenue and adopting Sections Two and Three as Jeff has prepared and circulated earlier today.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you need a second?
We need a second, yes.
I will second. Lanthea?
Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt local law number one for 2021. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Bob, with the with the changes that we've outlined.
Uh huh.
6:00 and PM.
Yes, as incorporating the amendments proposed by Jeff Turner. Looking for a second?
I'll second the Trustee Galusha.
Thank you, Frank. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next local law has to do with the parking formula for restaurants and based on study and recommendation of the recently completed Village Comprehensive Plan. We're changing the formula to reflect something that is more reminiscent of traditional neighborhood design standards intended to encourage walkability and minimize the amount of surface parking lots in a historic commercial district like the one located here in the village. Before we open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, so this is the one that I thought we were talking about, just doing away with it.
Yes, eliminating parking minimums altogether.
Yeah. And we were all, I think we were all in agreement on it.
I think we had some discussion on that. I think we saw this as an interim step. The problem, especially on Shane Place, is if we completely eliminate parking requirements, then, you know, in the past, pre-COVID, there's always been a crunch, particularly in areas that are short on parking, like the areas behind Simply Crepes and so forth. So I think in our last meeting, when we discussed this, we suggested we'll move forward with this, see how it works out. Then if further steps are required, then we'll go ahead and do that.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Stetser, second.
Lanthea, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Does anyone from the public wish to comment on the proposed change in the parking requirements for restaurants and food serving uses?
To be clear to the public, this is, I think, we had to do this in order to make the pavilion a reality, right? That's why we're talking about this now.
That's correct, but we did a fair amount of research, and I think the the number that we're using is a pretty appropriate number for for the multiple goals that we're trying to achieve in the commercial district in the center of the village.
Hello, may I speak?
Yes, could we have your name and address, Alisa?
Yeah, it's Alisa Plummer, 66 South Main Street. I really support you really looking at parking and changing it minimally, this formula. I think the overall question really is, what would happen overnight if we lifted all the parking requirements for our businesses? What would really happen? In other words, in Manhattan, you know, if we're an urban area, what would happen in Manhattan if you said, well, you know, you can't do your business unless you have eight parking spots? You know, we really have to look at the truth of what's already built out, and I think particularly on Shane Place, our parking at this point is quote "built out." So I think in some respects, it places a burden on our businesses to try to come up artificially with how they have the parking spots. And, you know, I agree with some of the discussion going on. Let's really, you know, open this up and say, what does this mean if we lift those kinds of restrictions on parking? There's no other parking other unless we choose to create it. That's all. But I'm glad you're looking at this issue. Thank you.
I think, Alisa, I think the the comment on that is, you know, what we've tried to do is is serve the interest of the business community. I love Manhattan, but Manhattan is demographically and in terms of transportation and the percentage of residents that drive very different from the Village of Pittsburgh. In talking to the restaurants and other businesses, although we aspire to be a completely walkable community, we still live within a suburban town where the majority of people that go to these businesses drive. I think in, I think eventually we may move more in that direction, but I think we also, as leaders, have to balance conflicting needs, conflicting interests of of our constituents. In this situation, in talking to the property owners and talking to the merchants, they aren't in favor of a complete removal of parking restrictions because places like the Coal Tower in Aladans and Simply Crepes have had problems in the past with a shortage of parking and a concern that they were losing patrons because there wasn't parking available. So I think we're going in the right direction. I think this is an evolving target in the same way things like traffic calming and sustainability are also. But I think this is a good first step.
You know, thanks for that. I think you give me, give important information about that, and, you know, I understand the suburban town requirements, but the parking requirements now are based on a suburban parking plan, and we are a small and tight urban area. And I know, you know, everybody struggles with parking. That's because we don't create anymore. It is what it is. It's already built out. And that that was only the, the, what I was positing for this group as we we look to the future and how retail is going to be and that climate. I think, you know, you're taking a good step. I'm not being negative about this, Bob. I'm just saying we have to be realistic. The idea that Aladans is concerned about parking, they could have been concerned, they've been concerned about parking for 30 years. You know, and it is what it is on Shane Place. You can't create more land. You can't, you know, this is what we have. So I think we need to have another look at this. That's all I'm saying. And at least tonight is a start because what we're doing is saying, you know, that activating Shane Place is more important perhaps than having a few parking spots. That's all we're saying. It's not a negative thing. It's a positive thing. Thank you for listening.
I agree, Alisa, and I think one of the other steps that I think we should move ahead with is eliminating parking maximum, or excuse me, having parking maximum so they don't, businesses can't provide more parking than the code requires. Because I think as, as we have discussed and was discussed many times during the comprehensive plan, it really is a detrimental thing to have more surface parking in a historic village like we have. I think the other, the other unique situation on Shane Place that's different from most traditional walkable commercial districts is because it backs up to the farm, which is under a conservation easement. It doesn't have the supply of side streets that might have more on-street parking, and the street itself, because of its narrow width, also doesn't have much on-street parking. So it is a little bit of a unique animal.
Well, anyway, would I be able to offer a comment at this point?
Absolutely, Jenny. Go ahead. You have the floor. Could you just give us your name and address for the for the record?
My name is Jenny Collins. Do you want my residential address or my property owner address?
Either one is fine.
So the property owner address is 78910 Shane Place. My residential address is 2366 Kirkhill Road in Parenton. I, I very much applaud that the trustees are taking this up and am very much in favor of this move at this point in time. And quite frankly, because I would love to see us continue to be able to move ahead with all of this pavilion planning that we have been doing for months and months and months now. On the flip side, I do just want to go on record that as a property owner, I would, I, whomever spoke, I can't remember if it was you, Bob, or someone else, said that property owners are reticent about removing the parking restrictions, and I would like to go on record as saying, as property owner, I am not reticent about that. I think that there is a lot to be said for, there are changes in how people utilize these businesses, as Casey has pointed out on numerous occasions, a very large percentage of his patrons use shared ride services. I think that we need to think about a lack of these parking restrictions in view of what what are truly the trends of how people are coming to these spaces anymore? And, you know, we, for decades, my family has paid for additional parking through the leases through our G and E. We have no intention of dropping or or changing that, and I think that I, once again, I'm thrilled that that it will be, hopefully, tonight changed in toward this ratio, but I just wanted to be clear that I am not someone who believes that it should be restricted. As a property owner on Shane Place, you know, continuing since my father owned it in 1968, I very much like to be on record that I would like to see it essentially be lifted altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Casey, would you like to speak? You're muted. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
Casey, we need, we need your name and address for, just for the minutes.
Yep, absolutely. Casey Dunleavy, 10 Shane Place. Current occupant is Lock 32. I just wanted to echo some of Jenny's thoughts as well. I applaud the board for taking this up, and I'm also in favor as a business owner in that area of lifting those restrictions. I think that changing people's behaviors, it can be a tough thing, but I think a lot of that comes about by making these changes and the restrictions that we currently have in place. And I, for one, have seen over the last five years that, I think sometimes having a parking demand means that there's some fun stuff going down there, and I think that a lot of times when when people want to get to a place, they will find a place. So I think that if you did go down that that route eventually, I think that you would see people's behaviors change based on the reality of the situation, meaning that, you know, parking is not as abundant as maybe it is now. So I do think that people will adapt quickly, and I think that we've seen that over the last couple of years. As business models have changed and ride sharing has become available, and the walkability of Pittsburgh continues to progress in a great direction. So I just wanted to go on the record of also saying that I'm in favor of that further decision.
Thanks, Casey.
I would, I would also add that, you know, I think the project with the pavilion is kind of a dream come true because there's few communities where this would happen, but we're taking a parking lot and we're essentially making it into a garden and a usable public plaza, which really fulfills the, I'm getting a little bit ahead of this on the agenda, but it does fulfill the goal of the original Shane Place Village Erie Canal Park project, which was to create a usable four-season public plaza right on the canal. And I think we're going in the right direction. Dorothea, you have your hand up.
Yes, I have a comment from.
Yeah, go ahead, Dorothea. Do you want to read the comment?
Yes, we had a comment in the chat. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, "In collecting information from our businesses during preparation of our complaint, especially on Shane Place, a major concern was the availability availability of parking for their customers. We must remember that this is not an urban setting, that we need to be aware of how decisions will affect our businesses. Removing the parking formulas would be a mistake." That was from NEC. They didn't give a further information on who it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I had a comment. So Bob, you mentioned that you talked to a bunch of business owners that were against removing the parking regulations. Maybe it's an education thing, and we could get them in and talk to them and hear their concerns and help them understand what the vision is. And so maybe you could, maybe you could bring all those people that you talked to into, to talk about that. Be good.
Well, I think if we want to make more changes, I think it would make sense to convene a group of the people that that are going to be affected. I know Louis Gitzis is one person who is concerned about it and has expressed concerns in the past. Several of the other property owners have also said that to me as well. But I think, again, I think like everything else that we do and that we've seen happen in the interim between our two comprehensive plans, this is a changing target, and I expect we'll make more progress on it in the future. Tonight, we're really just looking at this first step, and so I'm sure we're going to move ahead with this. Are there any other comments? Does anyone else wish to comment on this proposed local law? Yes, Renee?
I have said this multiple times and am in favor in continuing this conversation about eliminating the parking minimums. We talked about it during the zoning code updates and in all of these previous meetings, and I know we're not there yet as a board, and I would not be in favor of eliminating parking minimums tonight because I want more public engagement on that, and people are expecting us to to do a much smaller, smaller thing tonight. So, but I hope we do continue the conversation on eliminating parking minimums that came up in our comprehensive plan, our zoning code update. It was recommended by our consultants. So I think this is moving in the right direction.
Yes, I agree with you, Renee, and I think when Justin Valistra and I were at a parking seminar in Batavia a couple of years ago, there was, I'm trying to remember which engineering firm was, but we were both impressed with a presentation of the firm. I think they did work for the city of Rochester on revamping their parking code, but I think we might want to get help from somebody like that to address, you know, because the, you know, South Main Street functions differently than North Main Street, and North Main Street functions differently than Shane Place. We need to have some, it may not be a one-size-fits-all solution, but I think the general direction is something that we all generally support. Okay, any other comments? If there are none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Galusha.
Thank you, Frank. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Stetser? Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Again, we have to do seeker and Jeff has prepared sections two and three and a proposed draft negative declaration. I support those conclusions because in changing the parking requirements, there are no physical changes that will incur in that neighborhood. This is a proven formula that has been used in other traditional neighborhood downtowns. I don't anticipate any adverse environmental consequences that I can think of from this. So I'm going to make a resolution to approve adopting Jeff's draft proposed section two and three and a negative declaration. Would someone like to second that motion?
That's her second.
Thank you, Renee. Any discussion? If not, Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I will make a motion to pass this local law number two of 2021. Do I have a second?
Lantheer, second.
Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye. Thank you, everyone.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item we have, I believe, is a proposed amendment to the current zoning map that would change the boundary of the tavern overlay district to include lock 32 and the new proposed plaza area between lock 32 and Aladdin's Restaurant. Is there any discussion or comments from the board?
Lantheer?
Yes.
Did we ever get more specific boundary information? Someone was to go to the mapping and find out the exact boundaries? Did we, did we determine what they were?
They are drawn to scale on this map.
Yeah, I saw on that map.
And there's an, there's an extra line on that, this map that would disappear.
Yeah, that was, that was a little confusing.
Yep. So I, I think this is adequate for our math purposes, but I did not have time today due to other complications due to the email situation to talk to Michelle W.
Okay, is there a way that we could?
Jeff, Jeff, I think, I think this is a question for Jeff. Is there a way we can make sure that in our motion, we're very specific about where the boundaries for these changes fall?
Does it follow, it should follow, does it follow lot lines?
No, because Aladdin's and the Plaza are on the same, same lot. So the proposed boundary would follow the center line of Shane Place from the east end of the lock 32 Jemba Tat building and continue through the center line of Shane Place to the edge of Aladdin's Restaurant. And then go from that corner southward to the boundary with the Erie Canal property.
And then returning?
Returning along the canal land.
Eastward, eastward.
Eastward to, to meet the existing district by the flower mill.
There you have it. That's the, that's the description.
So no changes on the north side?
Not at this time.
Isn't that roughly what's shown on the map?
Yes, that is, it is what is shown on the map, but I think there was some concern about exactly where those lines fall. That's why I, I read that description.
Yeah, that, that, in terms of specificity, that would do it.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other comments from the board before we open the public hearing?
And we're, we, we talked about, this doesn't include the wine bar. There's no changes on the, the north side. And do we have any concerns about, about that? We can make this less restrictive tonight, but not more restrictive, correct?
Yes, my, my only concern about that is it does a residential to the north.
Yeah, we, we talked about this before and I think we were split on, on our concerns about that. Because I think there are other restrictions in place and other, other things that will assure that the, any business that would come in would have to abide by noise restrictions and, and all of that. So I think that's less of a concern to me. I would, I would be open to extending that north, that north side boundary so that the wine bar would be in it right now.
What, may I comment?
Yeah, yes, go ahead, Lilly.
I think, Renee, then you would be talking about actually that whole section because you can't just isolate the wine bar. You would be talking about the entire thing. So do you want to, to table this resolution for this evening and leave it for another time?
I don't want to table it. I want to talk about if we should extend it all the way because I don't want to have to do this twice. But I don't want to table this. We, we've, I mean, this is an important piece of this development. I mean, this project on, on Shane Place. So I, I do think it's silly that we're splitting that property. But if no one else thinks that's an issue tonight, I do not want to table this. And I will agree to this current map.
Lantheer, may I recognize again?
Yes, go ahead, Lilly.
I would, I would think that given what Renee is proposing, I, I would not feel comfortable without some research before adding an additional district, you know, combining and making it bigger. I would, I would want to have discussions and maybe just some, you know, reaching out to the, to the community and having an opportunity to, to discuss, to discuss. So as Bob points out, it does back up to residential, which we talked about all of this when we were, when we, when we did the code changes. And there were reasons why we didn't include the north side at the, at the time. So if we want to revisit that, then we can table this for this evening and move on and have another crack at it, if you will, at a later date. But I'm not, I'm not ready to say, oh, yes, well, let's just add this on this evening and, and extend it.
I, I think that makes sense because I think, you know, you really want to understand all the issues and study it before you, you open it up. I mean, and I'm thinking recently, the issues that we heard on the other end of the complaints of some of the residents on State Street from the late night uses in Northfield Commons. So I think, you know, we can consider it, but I think we should proceed cautiously. I think that's kind of beyond the scope of what, you know, we really were focused on tonight. So we can always have more discussion and make another amendment or another change. But I think tonight, let's just focus on, on what, what's on the table. That would be my view.
Steve's got his, got his hand up. Mayor Corby.
Steve, go ahead. Yep, Steve.
I was going to say, you can't, this isn't an item where you could just change a few words. This had to go through Monroe County Planning. This would take another whole, you know, I mean, it, it's not a simple change to do it like some of the other things. We can change a word again. This would take a whole new set of plans, a whole new map, whole new application to Monroe County for approval. So I would hope that we would judge on what's on the table tonight to allow the people, the people that are part of this whole group here tonight to move forward with what's, you know, what we're hoping is going to happen.
The other, the other. The other thing that would stall it, Renee, is because this week in neg deck, I think, because there's no proximity to residential. Because this would change a zoning district that is adjacent to a national register listed property, that would trigger an automatic type one action, which would mean a 30-day waiting requirement, which would really bog the process down.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to, we, we discussed it while we were coming up with this earlier and I wanted it, I wanted to say it again in public at a hearing since we did discuss extending that boundary before. And we ended up with this, this more limited one and that's fine for where we are right now. But, okay.
Thanks, Renee.
Done.
I like the impulse. Thank you.
I think, I think also, you know, I'd make one other point. Because we advertised for this proposal and if we, if we open it up to do the whole thing, I know, you know, personally, I'll, I'll admit, my parents lived there. They would be very opposed to this and they would want the opportunity to comment. And they wouldn't have had that if we had proceeded with, with the district extended to the west.
Gotcha. This is much like the parking, the minimum parking requirement discussion. I just want it to be something that we keep on our radar.
I think we all agree with that. I think, you know, I think one of the reasons we've been successful over time is to continue paying attention to conditions as they change and adjusting our, our code to, to meet current requirements. So I, I, I agree with you. Any other comments from the public while we have the?
We didn't open it.
Public hearing opened.
We didn't open it.
Bob, we, we didn't open it.
We didn't even open the public hearing, did we? Yeah, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
That's her second.
Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating. Trustee Keating.
Apparently he left the meeting. So, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this proposed local law number three? Hey, are there any chats, Dorothea?
Nothing in the chat boxes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? A second, anyone? Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Jeff Turner's draft of sections two and three and a negative declaration because this change, number one, the extension of the tavern overlay is located physically remote from any residential use or residential zone district and does not cause any physical change to the landscape in that area. There are no physical effects from this proposed zoning change. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that. Trustee Galusha.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Okay, moving on. We have a public hearing to consider the application for a new.
Bob, does the board want to adopt that local law?
Oh, yes, that's right. Thank you. Yeah, too many, too many motions, too many motions. I'll make a motion to adopt. Do I have a second? Local law number three.
That's her second.
Thank you, Renee. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item is a new special permit for lock 32. Casey, would you like to address the board?
Absolutely. So I, I don't have a ton to add that we haven't already talked about and I certainly don't want to take up too much time. But I, I did want to thank not just this board, but all the boards for this, the due diligence and this process as we've gone through it. I know it's, it's been a long haul for everybody, but I think that a lot of the conversations that have been born out of this process have been great. And we're very much looking forward to continuing to add to the, the charm of this village like we have for the last, boy, it's gone on six years now. And I think that this will be, this approval will be a big step in, in our continued growth and, and progress and being a, a key member of this village going forward. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, Casey.
Okay, with that, are there any comments from the board before I open the public hearing? Since there are none, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Trustee Galusha.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lantheer.
Lantheer, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Are there any comments from, from the public on the proposed special permit for lock 32?
Hello, may I speak?
Yes, could we have your name and address again, Elisa?
Yeah, it's Elisa Plummer, 66 South Main Street. I just want to indicate my strong support for the expansion of this permit and also to applaud Jenny and Casey for really thinking creatively and just putting together such a positive project for Shane Place and for our village. And I hope every member of this board supports this. They have done nothing but be really pillars in our community and really recognizing and meeting the needs really of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Jenny?
I would just like to add my support as the property owner. Casey and Seth as tenants have been true leaders in being imaginative and innovative and were the, were the initiators of coming to my son and I very early last spring in the midst of this pandemic, that none of us understood what in the world was going on and saying, you know, we have this idea. What would you think? And I think that that needs to be applauded and the, the spirit of what they are willing to contribute and what it's doing for, you know, our entire section of Shane Place. I, I just think it's one of the, the best things to happen since, since the other steps that were taken in the mid 90s. And I, I think it's a natural continuation. And I sincerely hope as a property owner that we can continue in this spirit of building and adding to the village.
And I, I'd like to make a comment because I think in 1993, when we got the grant for the first Shane Place project, we had a vision. And the vision was to take a waterfront that was completely underutilized, had a parking lot that went up right to the water's edge, no delineation between the asphalt and the edge of the canal. You could drive right into the water. We had a vision for a public gathering spot and a plaza. And I think what this plan does is it, and, and certainly everybody's been impressed. Everybody's raved about the activity that occurred there with concerts, with people just sitting to watch the sunset or having a beer from lock 32 during COVID. It was a, a great relief from the lockdown and the restrictions that everybody was under this year. It's a fantastic, real partnership between the village and our businesses. And I also have to say that the refinement made in the design, I looked at the, the latest version today with Steve Loth, is fantastic. We've taken, we've gotten rid of an asphalt parking lot and we've created a garden, a pavilion and a real plaza that's going to be, I think, probably one of the key activity spaces in the entire village. So I want to thank Jeff Turner. spaces in the entire village, so I want to thank Jeff Turner and Steve Loth for the research they did for making this happen, I want to thank Casey and Jenny and her son who we reached out early to try to find a solution that would work for everybody and meet everybody's needs and I think this really is a great example of collaborative efforts working in the village to try to solve problems and particularly, I think that, that the real beneficiary of this is the public because it's the type of use and use of public space that activates Shane Place and really fulfills the vision that we established twenty-five years ago, so, thank you to everybody involved here, I can't say enough good about this project, it is, it is fantastic. Casey, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be remiss if I also didn't mention Ted Collins who Jenny shared with us and, and I, I didn't know this not being a lifelong village resident, but I'm getting to know Ted and, and him becoming somewhat of a mentor to Seth and I as we, we began opening our business and was constantly in awe of him and how meaningful it was to talk to Jenny and have Jenny share that this was kind of Ted's vision from the start and, and the, the timing of it coming up on, on twenty years, I, I just think it's incredibly special and I, I think that Jenny said some really nice things about Seth and I and I would just like to repeat that. If anybody on here hasn't gotten to know Jenny and Andrew, it's, it's not an easy act to follow with Ted Collins, he did a ton for this area and Jenny and Andrew are an absolute treat to work with and I think are doing tremendous things to that Shane Place area and I think they're a tremendous asset to the village, so Jenny, I know that you worked a ton on this, thank you so much for, for all of that work, Steve, I feel like I've gotten to know you a lot better and, and thank you for all of your work as well and I know there's a bunch of other work behind the scenes, but I just wanted to bring that up and, and make that connection because I think it's worth reflecting on.
Okay. Thank you Casey, any other comments? If there are none, I'll make, yep, I'm sorry, I heard someone.
Right.
Mayor Corby, Mayor Corby, trustee Galusha, at the last, well, the last time that we, that we discussed this concept, we were all in support of it and there, there was, there was one consideration that we, that we just touched on briefly tonight and that is the public use of this area, which I'm concerned about and I'd like to record to reflect and Casey, I think you had some pretty good ideas about how we can reinforce the, the public use of this area and I think Jenny Collins was also in support of that concept, so I would just like to say that I still support this area, I support this concept and, but I also support the public use of, of this area as it was originally meant for, so those are my comments, I, I, I think you had something to say Casey?
Yeah, we did talk about this last time and, and my intention, and I can let Jenny speak to her part as well, but my intention is to, to continue the use as we've, we've done so far, which has been, we have not hung any signs saying private property are not open to the public, we do not take any furniture in at night, there is no gate, there's no lock, we train our staff to be accepting of anybody that's using the property whether it's during our business hours or not, I think someone made mention, I think it was Steve last time about the, the group of men that have coffee down there every morning when the weather's nice and sometimes even when it's not and, and I love seeing that, I, I think it's a very special place and I think the more that can enjoy it, the, the better it is and my intention is to continue operating that way.
Thank you Casey, any other comments?
If I could- I think that's what you said before, Casey, thank you.
If I could just respond to-
Heard someone else, Renee, Renee, I saw your hand up next.
Oh, I just wanted to, to echo some of what, I mean, all of these things we're talking about tonight have been jump-started because of things like what, what Casey and Jenny have proposed here and that whole transformation of what has happened with that outdoor space by lock thirty-two this summer has been incredible and through the winter, I mean, they, like, they've shoveled, so you've got these little igloo kind of like things made of all this snow and it's the fire pit in between, it's just made it so lovely down there and it's, it's just enlivened it, so, that's all.
I hope, hope those fire pits continue after COVID because everybody loves them, I think they're so cool, I think it's a great idea, great idea, anyone else, any other comments? Okay, if there are no, yep, go ahead Jenny.
No, I don't, I don't mean to drag it on any longer than it needs to be, but just to reassure trustee Galusha that my response is the classic, why would we mess with something that isn't broken, I mean, it, it has worked well since, since the spring, there has been no need to restrict anyone's use or access, it's been a delightful area for people to gather whether they're choosing to use the businesses or not, I, I just, I would not mess with success, I, I, it, it just seems like a natural to have it continue to be open to the public.
Thank you, thank you, I agree, I agree. Okay, any other comments before we close the public hearing? I see none, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that, trustee-
Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Jeff, Jeff Turner informs me, we do not have to do seeker on the special permit, Jeff, do you want to comment on that?
No, that's correct, it's, it's part two, it's a type two because it's a use of an existing, of a parcel that is by special permit, so specifically listed type two action, so no more, no further seeker action is necessary.
Right, I would like to make a motion to approve lock thirty-two's special permit application and I would like to include in my approval, again, there is a public benefit here because the activation of a former parking lot into a plaza was very successful this year and I think it's an activity generator that contributes to the vitality, vitality and vibrancy of the Shane Place waterfront area in the village. Do I have a second?
Lampier, second.
Thank you, Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Thank you everybody, thank you Jenny, thank you Casey.
Thank you all very much.
Jenny and Casey, besides this, is there anything we can do to help your businesses right now?
Dan, I, I really appreciate that, that question, this, this is going to go a long way to, to helping us, we're, we're extremely excited at the, the possibility here and Steve has done such a tremendous job that I, I feel very comforted in being able to, to talk to him as, as questions arise, so I'm very confident that he will work with us in, in a, a, a quick but diligent fashion, so at this point, I'm, I'm great, but you guys also know I'm, I'm not shy about coming to you with, with ideas, so you'll hear from me again if, if I have any questions or concerns, but I greatly appreciate the time and the support.
Sure, Jenny, anything we can do for you?
Um, I, I, I would love to make a list of ten or twenty things, but I won't do that right now, I'm, I'm very pleased with where we're at and I'm hopeful that as we move through the next couple of steps, I believe we're on the planning and zoning board for the twenty-second and on the HPD for March eighth, oh my gosh, I would love to have a groundbreaking in March and come back early from Florida just to be there and see it because it would, it would be a wonderful occasion, I, I, I'd come back from the tropics to the tundra gladly to see that happen, so, I'm hopeful.
Maybe we'll have an early spring.
I'm, I'm hopeful, my father's birthday is April twelfth by the way and so, you know, wouldn't it be really awesome to have it underway before what would have been his ninety-third birthday, that would be really awesome, so that's where my thoughts are and, yeah, thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, we have a non-municipal use permit for a frog house.
I can review this with the board, Bob, if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't you? You could.
I received email from Margot, Margot, Margot Boss, I cannot say Margot's name, I apologize in advance and afterwards, she's looking for approval to hold three events, March twenty-eighth, the forest gardens in a nutshell, she's looking for the May twenty-third forest gardens in a nutshell planting and the June twenty-seventh woodland scavenger hunt.
Where?
Uh, it looks like the two events, I believe that is part of the property, Bob, that she reviewed with the board her last time at the board meeting?
That is, that is correct, yes.
Near the DPW?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't see an application, so in the meeting packet, we got a, a schedule of events, that was it, there's no detail, there's no formal application, so I'm curious why we're talking about this now when there isn't anything here to talk about and why we're doing this at a special meeting, why did it get snuck into an agenda of three hours ago, what's, what's going on here, what, what's the urgency?
Um, this was actually in-
It wasn't in yesterday's packet.
Yes, it was, it was actually in the packet you received Friday, yes, it was, yeah.
I, I, I've got it right here, I'll show it to you if you want.
I will, I guarantee you it was in the packet I put on the website on Fri- Friday, nothing changed on the packet I sent you today, it even states that.
Here's my screen. Here you go, I'll share my screen.
Um, okay.
There you go, can you see it?
No, you're not able to share your screen.
Well, okay.
Um, it was there, you can check the website, I've not changed my site.
Let me share my screen, I'll show it to you, but it, it doesn't erase, why are we doing this right now and there's no application to talk about this, you, you guys railed on me about not getting agenda items in, you know, I would send them to you on Saturday and that wasn't good enough for a Tuesday meeting and I get something three hours ago and it's totally incomplete and I, I don't understand, there, there's two standards going on here, I really don't understand what we're doing, there is no application for us to review, period.
All right, why don't, why don't we take it, table it for now and ask to have the application-
We'll, we'll table it, but I would verify with Dorothea that because I was in the office and I overheard the phone call and she asked me a question for Margot's number because she needed information from Margot on Thursday, so I, I know she put it in the packet, so.
Hey guys, not in the packet, I'll, I'll forward you the email, okay, it was in the packet today.
All right, let, let's move on, let's, let's not debate this right now, let's just move on.
I'm just responding to your BS, okay?
I'm sorry, I, I'm taking, I didn't provide any BS, I did give this to the board.
Say again?
So the, so we're looking at three events that we're going to review next, next, our next regular meeting and-
Yeah, we have a meeting, a meeting next week, we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
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 All right. All right, moving on, the, the last item, we had a request from Mike Reynolds, submitted a letter of interest in being appointed to the, as the alternate member for the planning board, Mike has probably attended more planning board meetings than anyone else in the village, he's done that for many, many years, he's a well-qualified applicant for that, he's, he's spoken on a number of issues on the planning board.
So there's something left, oh, go ahead.
The last time we went through this, Bob, you, you had said that you would post these, that you would send emails out, that you would put, you would put notices on our Facebook page, we would have a transparent process to solicit candidates, now you're, you're well within your right to appoint whomever you want as a, as a, as a replacement seat, I'm not sure how it works as an alternate, but you promised us you would do this in a transparent manner and this is entirely the opposite of that, what's the-
It is, it is being done in a transparent-
I got something at three o'clock today that said Mike Reynolds is getting on the board, totally out of the blue, I got a call from the, the chair of the PZBA saying, what's going on? I have no idea, there's exactly zero transparency.
Okay Dan, yep.
Did the, um, did the planning board, did the, does the planning board know about?
Yeah, I, I, I discussed it with Justin Valistra, yes.
Justin, are you on the call?
I am on the call.
All right, just, just, just a fact, hold on, I'm talking, Dan, I didn't talk when you talked.
Bob, I am talking to him.
All right, we're going to recess the meeting for five minutes until Dan can-
Okay, Bob, I asked a question-
-with order in the meeting, okay? All right, recess for five minutes, we'll be back in five minutes, I would ask everybody to allow one person to talk at a time, Dan, you had your, your chance to talk.
I said, is Justin here, Justin said yes, so that meant I had a question for him.
You're not running the meeting, Dan.
I was talking, Bob.
You interrupted me, Dan.
Bob, I just told you, I didn't interrupt you, I was talking, I asked a question, go watch the tape, I asked a question, Justin said, yes, I'm here, it, I was talking.
Okay, since no one's talking now, I'll just point out that under New York State village law, all appointment, okay, recess for five minutes, Dan interrupting me, we can't have a meeting with more than one person talks, we'll, we'll reconvene the meeting in five minutes, I would ask that when we reconvene the meeting, that everyone be courteous to the other members of the board, okay? We'll be back in five minutes. We'll be back in five minutes. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
I second that. Lancel.
Thank you. Dorothea, please call a vote. Dorothea, you're muted.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lancel.
Lancel, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'm making a motion to an appointment. Appointments are solely made by the mayor, subject to board approval. So, I'll make the motion and then open it up for discussion by the board. I'm suggesting Mike Reynolds because he has reached out and expressed an active interest in the position and because he has also been actively attending meetings for many, many years regularly. I don't know of anyone else in the village that has been that active of an attendee at planning board meetings and it seems to me that is a valid qualification for participation on the board as an alternate member. Other comments from the board? Lilly?
You made a motion-
Trustee Lancel.
Did somebody second-
Yes, thank you. Was someone speaking?
Yeah. You have the floor, Lilly.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Lancel, I would like to point out that in the years that I have been involved in the village, which have been many, Mike Reynolds, from the time they have moved here, has been an active participant as a resident in ways that I have not seen from any other resident, frankly. Every trustee meeting, every budget meeting, every Saturday workshop, every comprehensive plan meeting, you name it, he was there consistently. And his observations have been spot-on and his support of the village has been unwavering. And I think for that reason, he would be an excellent addition to the Planning and Zoning Board, especially as an alternate, as we know that there is a learning curve to planning and zoning. And I think he has enough institutional knowledge of how the boards interact with one another and as well as how the government functions to be able to transition pretty smoothly as an alternate. There are things facing the board presently and I think that he will be an asset to all of their deliberations as they move forward. I sincerely cannot think of another individual in this village unless somebody can point them out to me who has been consistently at our meetings the way Mike Reynolds has. So, I'd like to hear what the objection would be, if that's what I'm hearing.
Well, Mike, can I talk?
Oh, can you or may you?
You're recognized, Dan. You have the floor.
Can I or may I? Excuse me? May I speak? Did I say some-
Mayor Corby?
Yes, Dan, I told you, you have the floor.
Okay, Lilly had something smart to say. There's challenges on two points of this. One is notification of this. I've known this is happening now. I've already said what I wanted to say about being transparent about it. We talked about this the last time and, Bob, you were in full agreement and it's on the record that you were going to solicit in an open way for open positions on boards. Now, you don't have to do that, but you said you would and I'd like to hold you to that. The second more important point for me is I want to see, yeah, Mike shows up at a lot of meetings. That's great. What we're losing in Justin Leitgeb is an incredibly valuable resource on the Planning and Zoning Board. Justin knows his technical stuff. He is terrific in Google Sheets and documents and spreadsheets and files and he's incredibly technically savvy, which is an asset to that board. As their liaison, I've seen him in action and it helps. And that is a skill set that I really do think we will need. They don't have administrative help the way Bob relies on Dorothea to handle technical things that he doesn't quite get. You know, that Planning and Zoning Board needs that kind of skill set, which is why I'd love to see Mike's resume to see if he has any of that. So, those are my things. And then, more importantly, I really don't understand why we're doing this at a special meeting. This is absolutely the kind of thing that could wait until an official trustees meeting. And, Dorothea, by the way, I figured it out. What happened was you did send it on Friday. The problem was the subject line in the email said it was for the budget meeting. It didn't say it was for the Tuesday meeting and you'll see what I'm talking about. So, it's an honest mistake that the subject line on the agenda was- So, I didn't open the one for Tuesday because it said it was the one for the budget meeting, which is tomorrow. So, those are my objections to Mike being a part. And it's not really an objection to Mike. It's an objection to the process being not transparent. It's, I don't understand why we're shoving this through in a meeting that's about something else that is not a regular meeting. And more importantly, I want to see some resumes and skill sets, including Mike Reynolds as well.
Just a note of correction. This was included. The request was put on the agenda Friday. So, Mike's letter we received last week, so I don't know why it just appeared on the agenda now. It could be because of the breakdown in the email system, but it was put on the agenda before the deadline for this meeting. It's an administrative thing. It doesn't require a public hearing or public input. It really is a board discussion, so it really doesn't matter when we talk about it.
May I have one more thing? May I be recognized?
Yes, you are recognized, Lilly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I would suggest that, as Dan pointed out, that Justin Leitgeb will be most probably leaving the board in April and that would be an opportunity to, if there are specific skill sets. I mean, it's lovely, but in all the years, that's never been one of the criteria before when people were interviewed. But certainly, Justin and Bob together, Justin Valistra and Bob together, could review a list of potential candidates at that time for Justin's replacement. So, there's an opportunity here as well.
There's also an opportunity now to do that.
I see no harm in-
I see tremendous-
-what's being proposed.
I have a list of other people that have expressed interest in the board and, you know, those will be used. Good boards function with a diversity of viewpoints and, as Lilly said, there will be another vacancy in the near future that will have to be filled.
So, we don't publicize that there's an opening. Mike Reynolds just says, "I want to be on the board" and we go, "Okay," without soliciting anything from the public, without any transparency whatsoever. There's supposedly a letter. I haven't seen a letter. I just, you guys, you can talk the talk on transparency. How about walk the walk?
Wait, Mayor Corby, may I say if you-
This is a village board discussion, Susan?
Oh, no, that was-
Let us finish the discussion first.
I would be in favor of tabling this, just recognizing fully that you can appoint him without all of this. But we discussed before, this has nothing to do with Mike's qualifications. It's just about the process and about trying to build a better relationship with our community by being a little more open in case there are people who don't know that there are opportunities. I would like to see it advertised. I mean, last time we discussed this was, I think, one of the last appointments and we put a time limit on it, recognizing that it's likely we won't get any other qualified candidates. And that's fine. It's more about the process of being open to new people, being able to come in or express their interest. So, it has nothing to do with Mike's qualifications at all. I've worked with him on the comprehensive plan. I know how involved he is and this is not about that at all. This is just about our process and being open to the community about opportunities.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, Mike has already demonstrated an aptitude and an interest in the planning board. You know, many times when I've interviewed people who have expressed an interest in position, they haven't even showed up for a single meeting to see what it's all about and see if it's something where they would really enjoy it and could subscribe to the, you know, the attendance requirements and the amount of research and training that are required really to be productive members. I had a discussion last week with Mike going over those things and ensuring that he would be willing to do not only the four hours of annual training, but also additional, taking advantage of additional training opportunities. I've known him for a while mainly because he's not only attended planning board meetings, but he's attended village board meetings as well and has been an articulate speaker at both. For me, those meet the requirements of who I, I don't ask people's party affiliation. I don't ask people what their viewpoint is, but I do seek to see that they have a valid commitment and genuine interest in the issues that affect and are relevant to the village, its livability, walkability, and commercial vitality. Frank, what do you think? Frank, you haven't spoken. What do you think on this issue?
Yes, I haven't spoken. I've just kind of listened to what everybody has to say. My view is- Mayor Corby and Lilly Lancel, I have listened to what you've had to say about Michael Reynolds and I agree with all the characteristics of this man that you have put forward. I would agree that he would make a very good alternate Planning and Zoning Board member. We're not going to find a person with all the capabilities of a Justin Leitgeb. I wish there were more of them walking around and I wish there were more of them that would indicate the interest in this board that Mr. Reynolds has. So, for me, I would support the appointment of Michael Reynolds as an alternate member of that board. And I agree with you, Dan, we ought to be a little more active in trying to seek some more people that would be interested in serving on our boards. But at this point, Michael Reynolds is a very good choice.
Thanks, Frank.
Since we do have openings on both boards, I think in a future eNews, we'll put a solicitation because we also have a position available on the Historic Preservation Board as well. So, I think, once again, it's been about a year since we've done that, put out an invitation. I'll put one out in a future eNews.
Can I jump in?
Dan, you wanted to speak. You have the floor.
So, my question is for Justin Valistra. As the chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, did any trustee or the mayor call you to talk to you about Mike Reynolds joining the board? Justin, are you there? You want me to?
I am here if I'm allowed to speak. I did not receive any emails or phone calls from any trustees. I was alerted this morning by somebody else who read the agenda and asked me what was going on. So, then I called the mayor and asked him what was going on and the mayor talked about it. So, I really agree with, I'm not going to talk about Mike at all, but I agree that this is, we can have a better process here. I realize it's the trust, I believe this is, the mayor nominate someone and this is a vote by all five trustees to confirm that. I believe that's what's happening. I'm not sure. But the mayor said several other people are interested in the position. I think he said he had several other candidates and I don't want to overweight myself because I'm just one person. But I think, I would think members of the planning board would be interested in at least looking at the list of names and resumes out there and at least being able to send comments to the trustees. I think we've always found that we make better decisions as groups than we do as individuals and having an opportunity to think about this may result in, would be good. It may come to the same conclusion or it may not. I don't know. I'm not going to speak at all about Mr. Reynolds here.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second that. Trustee Galusha.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please? Dorothea, you're muted.
Trustee Galusha.
Before you do, Dorothea, I do just want to say one other thing. I just want to underline what Justin Valistra said right there. I think it's appalling that we wouldn't engage with the chair of the board to talk about openings on their board. I just think that is 180 degrees away from transparency. Whatever the opposite of transparency is, that's it. So, that's it.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
No.
Trustee Lancel?
Lancel, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, nay.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Lancel, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lancel?
Lancel, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Renee. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Motion passes.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.